You ready Kent?
Yeah, I want to. Okay. Call this meeting to order for the city of novelty. Those present are Susan, Kent, Jared, Rex, and guests as Echo from Edina something. Superintendent report.
Okay, it's uh raining, kind of rains just a little bit, not enough to mount anything, but the first sale looks really good. It's still running about the same on P X level and I don't see any problems out there, so that's a good thing. If it doesn't flow this winter, that'll be another good thing, you know, for cost wise. We're not having the extra test, you know, taken to Edina. So uh this rain made the grass grow a little bit, but it's not, it's not hideous by no means out there, so. Don't see any problems. Everything looks good. So not much to report really.
Does everybody have a chance to look over the minutes? That was presented. Any questions or, or any mistakes or something please be corrected? Of course it is noted in the minutes, if you guys did not see it, that the sewer fee was gonna be long because it was late coming out and I'm sure that it is uh
The what?
Sewer. That eighteen dollars that was wrong.
Oh, yeah, right, 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 right.
It was uh mentioned last month and I'm sure it is uh showing the difference.
Yeah, it shows uh three fifty-eight and the deposits on the deposit sheet is three forty. Is that correct? And that should make it, that should make it right because it's short last month, longer this month. During the month before, actually, the month before. Yeah, three forty and the deposit says three fifty-eight, I believe.
I don't think I'm gonna find it.
I have things in. Yeah. Make a motion to approve the minutes as they're presented.
Jared makes a motion to approve the minutes. Ten seconds, those in favor? Everybody's in favor? Okay.
Okay, Missouri.
Um, are you still going to continue to vote as the mayor pro temp?
You can.
You can.
Yes, you can.
If you're acting as the mayor, are you sure that's the right thing to do? Just asking.
Well, it's right there, it's right there in the bill. I mean, I've, I've looked at it before, I've read it many times.
Well, I've looked at it three or four times and it says, is per, say, I'm fine with that. Fifty issue.
No, I'm just asking a question.
Well, as long as the position is not a vote or is it?
Well, you're acting as mayor, so you would use the mayor's uh duties there.
Says here, the mayor pro temp, this doesn't forfeit his or her seat on the board of order. When presiding and calling for the vote.
For the reading.
Right here, acting president, mayor pro temp.
Ready to begin?
Yes.
Okay. She'll have a seat in, preside over the mayor all, but only votes to break a tie. That's the very first sentence, only votes to break a tie. The mayor may not, may not preside over nor vote when she has a personal interest in surrender debate, da, 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 da. That very first sentence is what I'm asking about.
Well, if he can't vote tonight, there's no meeting because there's gonna be
That's kinda what I was asking that.
That's not, that's not a court.
Because we don't have a court, correct? That's correct.
I mean, that's
No, that's correct, that's why I was kinda asking that because I'm concerned I'm just like, it doesn't make any sense to me.
That is.
What's that?
I said it is. Well, where I can vote is therefore a tie, is that correct?
Correct.
I haven't done any research on pro temp, but for the mayor, yeah, that's standard.
Why not for a mayor either?
Well, he's acting as the mayor, that's what mayor pro temp is, temporary mayor, so.
Location, what do you want? Six?
Eight? Mine, I don't know, we got it next.
Hope he's on you reading wrong page here.
There's six right there.
This is board powers and in chapter four is mayor powers and duties.
No, read that right there.
That's what I was reading.
You read that.
I don't think he had, I don't think he
He says, the mayor pro temp doesn't forfeit his or his percy on the board of order. When presiding and calling for a vote, pro temp still votes.
That's what I thought it said, I think that's what it said.
And then he can still vote in a tie.
Interesting.
Still clear, yeah, still, still carry on my way off my bill.
Well, that's the way I read it.
Good dinner.
So, everybody had a chance to look over the bills?
Nope.
Looked at them.
Right here, the tax has them, I'm sorry.
Except for the water bill has already been paid because there's, they haven't sent a bill yet and I called over to Knox City to get the amount, make sure the amount was right, which I was pretty sure it was. And I wanted to get mine paid too because after the fourteenth they're late. And I don't know whether they're, they're gonna do anything this month for the ones that are late, I mean, the mail all messed up right now. Sure, that's what I've been told anyway, so.
Get your water bill this month?
No, that's what, that's what we're talking about.
Um, they have a um
Some sort of spill
Some sort of spill down there and they
Had to, had to end up taking
Hold it all down.
But didn't they have to wrap it all to Saint Louis?
Yes.
Well, ours goes to Saint Louis anyway, but a lot, like Edina, Knox City and those places, they go to Flumget. Different areas, I think, so.
Flowers is so long of getting on there down here because it has to Saint Louis and come back, the way I understand it.
And I didn't mow the signs and I took off for that on the bill, uh around the signs, so. I don't really think that they need to be mowed, doesn't look like it, I mean, that's just a little bit of a savings.
What's Mark Green bills for?
Phone.
Is there a phone here?
Yep, 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 there is. But I mean, the, this is, the cities um really shouldn't have a phone for, you know, and it's on an action machine, but nobody leaves a message or whatever. But the number, you know, four, five, one, one, I think, so.
I make a motion to approve financial reports as given. And bills paid.
Separately.
Do the bills.
Kinda make motion to pay the bill.
Second?
My second. My second.
Those in favor? Jared and Kent, see this post?
About financial report. We had a chance to look over it.
What's the one seventy-two?
That is what was owed out of last month's uh collections. That's not what
What, what do you mean, collections from?
From the certain
Not the county?
No, the certain. Sewer fee for last month.
I see, okay.
Yeah, I didn't designate what it was for, but that, it, it adds, it's a separate year, so I
Got it.
It'll change, it should change every month, so.
So the one seventy-two is actually added or is that a?
Well, that's added to the total amount, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
That's what was collected last month out of the fees that were sent out.
Make a motion to approve the financial report as I've been giving.
Very much motion.
Little second.
Kent's back it, those in favor? Everybody's in favor of that?
Clear to move.
Now, the first thing is there's a couple of notes left in the box. And listen, man, you're going back on all the
Sort of note or something for this or?
Got you right here.
Oh, they're together?
Give me that just one second.
I do, okay, sure, no problem. I was wondering what I was looking at.
Been cleaning out the corner here today, so my eyes
It says, at what point will we have an online portal, be it internet, to pay, view, or get a damn receipt? I need to get receipts from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three, individualized by month for the city case at one oh seven North Fifth. What would the answer to that be?
The city doesn't send out receipts.
Exactly, it's just like your, like your
Well, the, the bill that they get in the mail, just like the water bill, the
So here is your receipt.
Phone bill. All that stuff, that's, that's the receipts, the only time the city has given out uh receipts is when somebody comes up and pays cash personally.
Or does this person pay? Check, cash.
Most of the time, check, yeah.
So where's the receipt?
Well, not when they put it back in the, in the box, the drop box out here.
Well, they can go through check, register.
Still got their check. That's all I've got when I send, send mine.
So do you make it a habit then of giving people a receipt when they pay with cash or you just don't unless they ask you?
No, they, if they come to me, the clerk, whoever's the clerk personally and pay the cash, then, then they, if they want a receipt, they receive, they give a receipt, but there's been people that pays cash and don't ask for a receipt.
But there's people that pay cash that ask for a receipt, or no?
No, there's people that pay cash
I know, put it in the drop box.
Yeah, that don't ask for a receipt for cash, but that's the only time the cities ever, ever giving cash.
Well, this list, this list that you prepare should be accurate, right? So if they ask, did I pay this much in this month, we have all of this back up.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it's all, it's all in fine, I mean, it's all reported, who paid and who doesn't. Well, who pays?
Who pays?
Who pays, yes, agree. And who pays cash, I mean, it's all stated in, and on the deposits also, so. I mean, it's been, I mean, it just
So if someone asked you for a receipt from fifteen years ago, you would not give them a receipt, is that okay?
It's not up to me, but I would say probably not. That's up to boards, it's a lot of extra work.
Eighteen dollars. Lots, okay. Next.
Anything else? Click with it?
Oh, yeah, I guess I started that, okay. Last month I sent uh the minutes and financials converted them and I sent them to Echo, so she got those and I'll do the same thing again this month. Uh and I went up and talked to uh Margaret and she was at the assumption that the deadline was twelve thirty-one uh twenty-three. And it had to be spent by twelve thirty-one twenty-four. But
You're talking about the A R P funds?
The A R P funds. And uh, of course, I talked to her about the information that I had, it was different, so anyway, this is the email that she sent, it was uh there the next day or something, anyway, she says, I Googled some A R P A information and I think you're right about the extension of the dates. It looks like twelve thirty-one twenty-four is the date when the funds must be allocated and twelve thirty-one twenty-six is when they must be spent. Is what she sent back, so. I'm, I'm assuming that's right. I'm, I mean, that's what she said, so I, I believe it, it's right, everything in our research is the same thing, same, same thing.
Things we don't have to spend that money for another three years, is there a reason that that's not put in a interest bearing account somewhere?
Well, it's, it's, it's getting there through the checking accounts.
Well, five, CDs are at five percent and we could make a bigger bang for our buck if we put that in an interest bearing account as opposed to a checking account.
I don't know whether that's allowed or not.
Yeah, it is, I looked it up. That's a lot of money sitting there for nothing.
Well, it is, well, it gets a little bit, not much, three, four percent of a percent.
Correct, as opposed to five.
I think, I think that's what it is.
As the mayor, would you look into that and see if we can put that money in the uh in a C D or somewhere where we can make some interest off of it? Which also brings me to another question, are you a signature on the checking account? Or is Jason still a signature?
Jason's still a signature.
Uh, yeah, can you take care of that too, please?
That has to be voted on by the board.
What's that, taking Jason's name on keys, please tell me.
And put, and putting another person's on, we went through that before.
Well, we have to decide who we're gonna put on.
I think the whole board should be here before that decision.
I agree with that.
But she also stated that they had went ahead, the, Edina had went ahead and designated the money for the Miller Park too, so. But once it's designated, I mean, that's what's gotta be done, so, that's my understanding of it anyway.
Her account for the city is systems bank, is that correct?
Yeah, there's three camps up there.
I didn't know, call U S B M would be wrong.
No, I don't think there's any good to call up there until the board decides.
They won't change an accountant unless it's in the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what
It's gonna wait.
That's what I had to do before. And, I mean, I'm gonna consider this the clerk report, uh, the street taxes going to be, this is the last year of the street tax, so to get the s- street levy, again, it has to be put on the ballot actually by next April and uh if the board decides to, to go ahead and do it, continue it, then it'll have to be approved and then I take that information up to Marlene and she writes up uh the tax levy because it's gotta be done by voted on and in Saint Louis by September first twenty, uh twenty twenty-four.
So we probably should have all the board members here to vote on that also.
Yeah, I think it'd be the best thing to do. So uh But this, this is the agreement that's sent back from the collector's office and it states everything in here. Kent's read it, but I don't think, has anybody else read it?
No.
You wanna read it?
Yes, please.
I've seen W D forty down here.
Yeah, they're getting over, then, then was in the school, half a thousand still. Long time ago.
Fewest table one that's a school to
Yes, it was. And I got, I ended up with one of them, it's down there in the shed across the street, but it's not worth much. Of course, this thing's not worth much either, but it's better than nothing because a table like this would be expensive to buy new for using it once a month.
Why are we being referred to as the village of novelty when you insist that we are a city?
Because, because half of the, half, half of the entities look at it as a city and half of them look at it as a a village, but it is a city, it was incorporated in eighteen hundred and fifty-six.
Yeah, I, I know that.
And I don't know how it got switched over to the village of novelty instead of the city of novelty.
And then how did it get switched over back from a village to a city? Or it's just always been a city, people just called it?
It's always been, it's always been a city, according to the state records that Jordan looked up. It's always been a city, but somehow they just
That Jordan looked up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I look, I mean, I looked it up online too and it said it was incorporated in eighteen fifty-six.
Right, yeah.
And somehow it got switched over to, they started calling it the village of novelty, so.
Wonder if we could ever get back to the city of novelty.
Well, what she said up here that night was they could, the city could still uh operate just like it has been because it would take a lot to get the name actually changed. I mean, some of, some of the places that send bills to the city, it says the city of novelty and other places it says the village of novelty, but the entity on sand dot gov is the village of novelty.
And I use village in the paper because that's how it's listed with the county.
Yeah.
And like when there's a vote on the ballot, it's a board of trustee as opposed to an alderman, so.
Yet we have a mayor, so it's pretty confusing.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have a mayor with trustees.
Well, I think the last time that uh, the last election, it was stated, I think Marlene stated that it was city election and board of aldermen.
Hmm.
I think. Not sure.
Have to pull one of the ballots and
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because I have to send, I mean, I usually send the ballots in and I can't remember what, well, I've got got copies of it all on the laptop, so uh, or in an email, most likely. But I don't, the way I understood it, it's not, I guess it's not a big deal. I mean, the lawyer wasn't concerned about it, so I, I, I'm taking, taking her word for it, you know, but it's always been called the village of novelty, you know, so.
You know, she'd sent me an email quite a while back about, you know, about this, I was just trying to
About?
Well, whenever my name was on the ballot, she emails a
Oh, oh, okay.
I was just looking here real quick, boss, is, was still reading here. I'm just
But I also talked to uh the state auditor's office, one of the secretaries down there, because they sent back in the email that there was seventeen, eighteen, nineteen uh had not been filed, the Form A fifteen dash one. And I don't know whether the city then got any notification for it or not, but anyway, I told the secretary that I would be getting those taken care of and they're all gonna be notarized, so.
So at the last meeting you were talking about how um when you turn those tax bills in, that they add interest and, and such to that. Is that the collector's office that adds that?
Yep.
Do you know how they, how they calculate that?
I have no idea. That's, that's their, that's their deal.
Well. I talked to someone in the assessors office. And this is how they determined that those um delinquent sewer bills were being paid. You know, put that to Jared. You know, that did you? So, I wonder if this is kind of an accurate depiction of how you calculate, um, past due sewer bills.
Yeah, I mean, I've already went through the assessor's office and which we all went through this year, some, right after I got to be clerk.
Okay, so, what you're doing, when, when you do the billing, you're, you're giving them a bill for eighteen dollars plus a five dollar late fee?
Right.
But you're not assessing any interest?
Not until after the third month.
And then you go back to the first month and start calculating the interest?
Well, the full amount, the full amount, yes.
So, this is an accurate depiction of how the, the taxes are?
Yes, and then when they're turned in, there's a twenty dollar, twenty-five dollar fee on top of that.
Yeah, that's on there, that's on there at the bottom, so.
Okay, yeah, I see, okay.
Yeah, so, out of a two hundred and sixteen dollar, um, a year sewer fee, you're, they're being charged three hundred and fifty dollars in extra fees on top of that for the year. Is that legal?
According to the ordinance back in nineteen, nineteen eighty-six, it is.
What ordinance is that?
Uh, it's one of the sewer ordinances.
Could I get a copy of that, please?
I'll have to, I'll have to find it.
Sure, no problem, um. I thought that there was a limit of nine percent that you could charge on, uh, debt.
I don't know.
Is that not correct?
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not up on that, but that's, that's what they allow them to do.
But, but you, but you go through this and then sort of like in this instance, you would turn into the, uh, collector's office, a bill of five forty-one oh two?
Plus the twenty-five dollars.
Plus the twenty-five dollars.
For twelve months.
Right, but what I'm getting at is last meeting you said that they calculate interest, but really you calculate the interest before you give it to them.
If they don't pay at a certain time, then they get interest on top of that, or they calculate interest on top of that.
Well, yeah, like if they're billed, if they, if they don't pay their property tax on time, they get an extra addition, but this is separate from that.
Right, right. Right, but, but they add. But they add the interest that they charge on top of that too.
If it's over, if it's after December thirty-first.
If, if, if. Yeah, if it's past due, which a lot of them are two years before the city gets the money.
Oh, sure, that's, that's normal, but.
Then, so, uh, so there's probably a hundred and fifty dollars worth of fees on top of that.
I'll review one here, um, interesting.
Would it be quite simple if they just pay their eighteen dollars a month?
Well, it would be in life, would be a bowl of cherries, but naturally, it's not.
I know, I know, I mean, and there is laws that the, the water district has to work with the cities in their district, uh, that, uh, if they get past due on their sewer bill, they shut the water off, but they've never pushed it that far.
Right. Well, that's because they don't do our sewer billing.
Well, that's true, and the, the water district doesn't need to be in control of the sewer system.
That's the kicker, right there. But they do that for all these other little surrounding cities like Ferglin and Bering and whatever.
They own the sewer system for those towns.
Right.
That's fine.
Yeah, and so do we, so.
They're, they're in trouble on their license too.
Well, there's, there's, there's lots of issues, so.
I know, I know, I've been, I mean.
The water issue in Bering is huge.
I can only imagine, I can only imagine.
Is it not huge, it's just ridiculous, uh, anyway, that's not the meaning.
But, but once, once the city would give it up to another entity, then that's it. I mean, the city would never get by, wouldn't have no control of, of anything and I.
That's correct. Well, they would get a lump sum of cash.
Yeah, but that's.
And then they wouldn't be bothered with the billing or the upkeep or the maintenance or anything else like that.
No, but that's a bad thing too, because that goes resource back to they can up the sewer fees to whatever they want to, to meet, meet, to meet the, meet their requirements when they have to do.
Well, we, we can do that too, though, so.
But, but the city.
Not that I'm saying I want that, has it?
But the city has it, that's why I worked so hard to, to keep it in compliance the best I can, there's certain instances where, Mother Nature doesn't allow that, that thing, but, uh, you know, it's been working, I mean, this system works better than any, because it's all gravity flow, there's no lift stations or nothing. No pumps, no maintenance on that, at least, you know, that's why it's, the price that it is, but, you know, DNR says it needs to be higher.
Yeah, they don't pay the bill though.
They don't.
So.
We went round and round about that one night in here when all the DNR people were up here. So, uh, their projected date, or billing, bill was a hundred and fifty-seven dollars a month.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, I'm, I'm serious.
That's more than my electric bill.
We just, I mean, we just had a fit about that, I said, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna drop the, the property value of this town down to nothing, I said, there won't be a town left.
I would say most of them. Well, yeah, most places, what, it's, uh, based on the water usage.
Well, that's true.
Um, just everywhere else I've lived has, is that way.
But, I mean, it's never been that way and, and the city would have to work with the water district to get all that, which is gonna cost so much to do that and so much to do this, you know, so.
Yeah.
The cost of, cost, cost of it would be extraordinary, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be cost effective by that means.
Anything else for clerk reports?
Uh, no, I talked about the, the back forms that hadn't been sent in, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Writing, writing down, but.
And if.
What was your numbers you?
Uh, A fifteen dash one, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and I believe twenty. And she definitely said if I needed any help, alls I had to do was call down there.
So, from twenty-one present or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, it's just four years that were off?
Right, right, and see, the half a year that I took over in twenty, does, there was never any, uh, never any, no dissent, that they hadn't been filled out or, or sent in, so.
Anything else on clerk report?
No, no, that's all I got, I think.
Let's move along to old business.
No, it's fine, okay.
Um, can I ask a question? It seems like you, what were your first, uh, fees for this year for this month?
Clerk?
Yeah.
The amount?
Yeah.
Two six twenty-five. Thirteen and three quarters hour is what I charged for.
And that was for these four things? The info to Echo, Margaret?
No, no, this is all the work that.
Yearly adjustments.
That's all the, sending out the sewer, did all the paperwork and all that stuff, I mean.
Okay, that's like two hours, right, for the sewer bill? I think that's what you told me, takes you two hours.
Well, right around that, yeah. I mean, that's not, that's, yeah, I don't know. That's not the only thing this clerk does.
I know that.
Okay, well, I mean, here, okay, alright, come on.
Old business.
Safety glass?
Still waiting, I hit, called him Monday again, he was, I went to Shelbyville this morning to get tires fit on my pickup, he was not at the, at his shop. I was gonna stop and get the quote back then, but he was not there. I have not forgot about it. I think.
There is somebody that wants to remain anonymous that will pay for Plexiglas and maybe some other stuff.
I know someone that will pay for the wood to fix them.
Okay, is there, any, anything involved here, is there, is there anything else on old business that needs to be discussed?
I mean, I think that is making the money to something the whole board should be here.
Exactly.
Just my, my thoughts.
No other old business, let's move right on to new business. Um, since we're already talking about the signs, I'm gonna jump right in here. The flower beds and all that, the, the lady that done this years ago, she said they're disarrayed, they can be gone, and we can just put up the sign without the flowers. So.
I think that'd be a good plan.
We was, we was.
No matter who does it in the future, I don't think anybody's gonna take care of it well or.
And I think we discussed that, touched on just a little bit last meeting. And, uh.
Yeah, we talked about, uh, volunteers to build those flower beds.
Exactly, but I would, this is a suggestion that we go ahead and get rid of the flower beds, make, uh, two nice signs on each end of town, without the flower beds.
So what, just while I've got mistakes or? Big sand ground?
No, 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 a nice four by six posts or four by four posts.
And just nothing on the bottom?
Nothing on the bottom.
And is that because we don't have the money for lumber or labor or?
The, the maintenance or the, the, we don't, not really the money or the, it's the upkeep of the flower beds.
Well, I'd be happy to volunteer to take care of flower beds. I think it's much more attractive than any other signs. Especially things we have volunteers to pay for everything.
But, I mean. Then again, we need to have everybody here to vote on that also. And then, last meeting, you was, Susan, you was going to check on broadband?
Correct, I just called, uh, to Mark Twain and we talked a little bit about fiber optics. She did tell me that there were a few people that they had as sample customers, but right now they were working in the Philadelphia somewhere else area, and there's no schedule planned to be in novelty, there's nothing on the schedule at all for that.
Did you find out a, a price on what might it brought down to be?
No.
She would not put?
No.
Okay.
Did you figure out how much it would cost you?
For broadband? No, we didn't talk about broadband, we talked about, um, what are there things they could offer now, and broadband was not one of them.
But I do know the phone companies are in the area are getting money to improve. I mean, just like the COVID money, so, it's gonna, it's gonna change in the next year or so.
Well, they're kind of a private company, so they pretty much do what they want when they want, so. I don't know that they're looking for how many subscribers and that's how they're doing that, based on that information, she wouldn't tell me that. Just that we're not on the schedule and there may be one or two, she said, homes in our town that were a, a sample, just to see if it works, so that might be what occurs.
Anything else on new business?
Actually, I have something because I've been getting inundated with questions, which is good, thank you Echo, um, several people would like me to ask what the job description is or what the general, requirements are for the superintendent's position.
You have to, you have to go through the course and pass the test?
No, no, I'm talking about what you do for the city as the superintendent, what are your basic general job responsibilities?
Oh, I take, make sure that the testing is done for P eights and B O D and, uh.
And, um, and B O D, and you do that every week, every month, every?
Every, every week.
Once a week?
Well, no, most times twice a week, you know, I mean, it's not twice a week.
But not in the winter time?
Well, yeah, I'm still supposed to do it in the winter time, I mean, to keep track of the pH le- or pH levels because they can't be over such, when it's, when it's flowing.
Correct.
You know.
But when it's not flowing, then you don't need to test it or?
Well, there's still. No, I've still gotta test, still have.
Twice a week?
Yes.
Okay. What else?
Uh, that's the main thing, make sure that, that it's operating properly. I don't know what else you're asking for.
I, I'm not, they're asking me and I would like to give them an answer, but I can't, cause I said, well, I guess I can. You test the pH and the BOD two times a week.
The DO.
Uh, DO, D, uh, got it, okay.
And it's been the same for?
And now, don't you send that quarterly somewhere?
Well, yeah, and there's paperwork that goes along with it, you have to keep records and it has to be sent in and then the, uh, the quarterly test, when it's flowing, has to go to Edina, uh, and then it all has to be done online.
So you send your reports to?
And then when it's flowing, how many times should you test?
Yeah, I mean, the same, it's the same, same all, all the time.
Are you still testing twice a week whether it's flowing or not?
Right, because you have to keep track of what, what the pH level is in the, in the first cell.
And then you?
And the DO.
So you test one cell?
When it's not flowing, yes. But when it's flowing, then the out, the affluent and the influent gets tested.
Okay. Anything else?
No, not, not that I can think of.
So, um, sorry, I had to make sure I understood, no, no. Um, so the only reports that you do are just the quarterly ones, you don't have to report annually on specifically?
No, there, yeah, there's reports that have to go in annually, the inflow and infiltration and, uh, uh, let's see, there, what's the other one, they'll be sending me notices here pretty quick, there's two reports every year, uh, that has to go in along with the quarterly reports, I mean, whether it flows or not, there's, reports still have to be filed and, and records still have to be kept.
Sure.
So. And the person that's doing it is responsible, I mean, whoever's got the license is responsible. And the person that's doing it is responsible, I mean, whoever's got the license is responsible for the, for all that.
Oh, yeah. I'm just trying to narrow down a monthly thing, so, monthly you're testing it twice a week. One cell, one cell. Okay. I'll make sure they know that.
Hmm?
I'll make sure they know that.
I let you just talk about what, what the requirements was to be the licensed operator, but then the board has to approve, the board has to approve who operates it anyway.
Well, yeah.
I mean, that's just what it's always been, so.
Yeah, well, whoever has the license or, or do it.
Right, right, and when DNR comes up here, then the operator's the one that has to deal with them, which they come up for inspections whenever they decide to.
Randomly.
Randomly.
Any other new business? Make motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Second.
Darren seconds, yeah, make the motion to adjourn, Darren seconds, all in favor? I'm in favor.